Good evening. The regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council from Monday, October the 9th, will be called to order at 7:05 PM. At this time, would everyone willing enable, please stand for the invocation given by Alderwoman Finlayson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, it's not my turn.
Oh, apologize, Alderman Lippman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no problem. It is my honor and privilege to give the invocation tonight. I frankly love the spirit of the invocation, which is to take a few minutes of nonpartisan, non-politics, thoughts of thanks and appreciation. So in that vein, I just want to take a couple minutes in my last invocation to thank the 600, 650 or so city employees who come to work every day to try to improve the city. Most do that without any expectation of recognition. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues on the council. Each of you, each of us step up and I respect that you put your names forward. We all take a little heat sometimes and I respect you all and I've learned something from you all. I want to thank all the members of our boards and commissions who volunteer countless hours, sometimes without any realistic expectation that their voices will be heard, but sometimes they get a lot done and we have a lot to be thankful for, for all of our volunteer members and boards and commissions. And lastly, I want to thank all the citizens who actually participate in these, in this public process. Those of you who are here tonight, who come to other meetings, those who read the paper about what we do and plan to do, those who watch on TV. This is a complex city government. We do a lot, even though we're only a city of 40,000 people or so, just under 40,000 people. Whether we're providing water services, or police services, or fire services, or planning services, it's going to be the same work for small or large and there's only a handful of people that come out and participate and I think that's really important. It's really important to have your input, so I want to thank our citizens who come out and participate. So, thank you, that's my final comment. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mayor Panaliti?
Present.
Alderman Budge? Alderman Pe Young?
Present.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Here.
Alderman Finlayson?
Present.
Alderman Lippman?
Present.
Alderman Kirby?
Present.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Alderman Arnett?
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our first item?
The first item on the agenda should be the approval of the motion.
I have--
Stand corrected, I think. First matter on the agenda is the nomination of the new member of the council.
I would entertain a motion from one of my colleagues to add to the agenda my nomination for the Housing Authority Board, Mr. Corey Johnson, not for an actual vote, but just for the purpose of moving it to committees. And I just want to read something about Mr. Johnson for the public's knowledge about him. He's a resident of Annapolis and is currently the Secretary and Safety Lead Officer of the town of Highland Beach. In this position, he is responsible for coordinating and implementing policies and procedures to ensure the protection and safety of the town of Highland Beach, which values assets approximately $1 billion. Mr. Johnson also serves the daily activities of the security team at the Weston and Georgetown and its Director of Safety and Security. There, he maintains a close working relationship with law enforcement, emergency agencies, interviews selects, trains, and evaluates coaches, security officers to maintain order throughout their property. I've chosen each nominee on the board very carefully. Each one brings their own unique skill set to the board and those currently serving have strong backgrounds in finance laws, housing administration. Mr. Johnson in particular will work well with our Annapolis police officers with his 15 years of experience in public safety and security management to the positions, including the Director of Security at the Gaylord, National Harbor, Manager of Public Safety at Universal Soul Circus, and Security Specialist at the Military Housing. So he's going to be filling hopefully the vacant seat of Deborah Johnson and I would entertain a motion to add it to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any-- I'm just a little confused. We've never before had, done this procedure when you just wanted to nominate someone to send to committee. Normally, you just send a letter to that committee for consideration, so I'm just a little confused what we're doing.
Basically, he's just noting that he's going to make the nomination. It's just, he's just noting that he's going to make the nomination. It's already been referred to the Housing Committee. It'll be on their next agenda.
So we don't need to amend the agenda for that, right? We've just made the notation?
Oh.
Okay.
So then just approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Kirby?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we take Charter Amendment 2-17 and Ordinance 47-17 and move it up before the public hearing for purposes of withdrawal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I just speak to that for one second? You can just amend the agenda to withdraw it because it's only on for public hearing. It's not on for any type of legislative action.
No. We want to withdraw the legislation themselves.
That would be withdrawn.
Not for public hearing, period.
That's what I'm saying. If you did that, made a motion to amend the agenda to withdraw the CA and the ordinance.
Okay. Then I'll stand corrected. I'll make the motion to withdraw CA-2-17, 047-17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is very unfortunate that we are finding the need to withdraw this legislation. This legislation has been in the works in some form or fashion for the last six or seven years. While there may be some in the community who thinks that this is a hasty piece of legislation, it is not. The fact that many of us, a majority of us on this council worked to put this legislation together speaks to the value of it. It appears now that we are bowing, since it's, some would call it the crazy season, it's election season, and now instead of doing what I feel is the right thing, the best thing, the professional thing for our city, we are taking a political stance and we're withdrawing this legislation. I think we all feel that there is work that needs to be done, absolutely, and that's what our committee process is for, to allow us to make amendments, to address the inadequacies in any piece of legislation. But to withdraw it now does not give us the opportunity to fix what's wrong, but to continue in the vein that we have been going with the problems that we see in the departments that are being addressed. Thank you.
All those in favor of withdrawal, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the Martha Wood Leadership Award to the
So about once a month, we have the opportunity to come in here and honor some of our citizens for the hard work that they do, and this is the prestigious Martha Wood Leadership Award that's going to Elevate Church. So I'm going to read you a citation that's signed not only by myself, but all the members on the city council. I want to thank you for your hard work. "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation. In recognition of being the 70th recipient of the prestigious Martha Wood Leadership Award showcasing your dedicated service to area youth programs at the Harbor House Eastport Terrace Community, we applaud Elevate Church involvement in the community dating back to January of 2015. When its members assisted children with homework and provided arts and crafts to the Eastport Community Center, we acknowledge that the church provides week-long sports camps at the community center, as well as introducing various crafts and team sports in 2017. Throughout the years Elevate Church began directing the Tuesday-after-school learning experience at the center in partnership with another organization. The impetus was providing children in the program experience with STEM tools, as well as focusing on family-building skills. For your consistent and successful efforts in serving the youth of the Housing Authority of the city of Annapolis, we applaud your determination and honor you tonight, and it's given under our hand in the great seal of the city of Annapolis. Congratulations."
Thank you. It's an honor. We obviously do not do the things that we do for recognition, but the recognition does tell us that people are seeing the things that are happening in our community and we're thankful for that. It's been a joy to work in our community. The very first group that I connected with shortly after we moved here and started this church was the HACCA Eastport Community Center and working with Lauren Fisher, with Ms. Tippi, with Ms. Ray, and it has been a joy to get to know the children, to be able to provide some of these opportunities for them so that they can see the hope of a great future educationally, artistically, and many other ways that we've worked with them, and we're so thankful to do that. We also partner with the Seafarers yacht club, which is where we meet on Sundays for worship. It was the segregated school for Annapolis and then they purchased it and that's where we actually rent space and meet on Sunday evenings for our service, and so we are thankful that we're able to have such great partners with them, with the city of Annapolis, with the Annapolis Police Department, with others, and we're thankful for the work that they do in helping us as well. Thank you.
I want to say congratulations, well deserved. You are a very dedicated church and the Housing Authority appreciates all your efforts and your continued efforts as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment about the Martha Wood Award.
Please.
We give the Martha Wood Award every month, but there are also many other awards that go along within this city, and as the pastor indicated, they don't do it for recognition. But one part of award acceptance is to give inspiration to those out there who may be thinking about volunteering or helping others. So for me, as a personal matter, it's a sign that maybe I can do that too, to someone who's listening and watching what goes on here and the people that do receive the awards. Thank you again Elevate Church and all those others who are out there doing extraordinary volunteer work. There's more to be done and those who are inspired, please come aboard. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, could you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is a ceremonial item for the police officers Randy Kess and Angelo Watson.
They could join me at the front?
Chief Baker, do you want to sit?
Who did the police officers?
As many of you know, we've decided in the last budget, not just myself, but all the members of the city council, to hire 10 new additional officers. Some of them are new, some of them are laterals, and we have two of them here today, so we always like to give the community a face of the people that they're going to be protecting and serving. So I want to thank both of you for your service and coming and choosing Annapolis. I know you could go anywhere and we appreciate having you in the city. So if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Randy Kess.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of police officer according to the Constitution and laws of this state and the charter and code of the city of Annapolis. Congratulations. Give them round of applause.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Randy Kess. I'm from Baltimore City. I'm just ready to serve this community in any way, shape, and form that I possibly can.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angelo Watson. I'm from New Jersey, but I'm a lateral from Washington DC. Just looking forward to being here. Thank you.
Whose phone is that? Let me turn Ross' mic off. Pick it up. I have a whole Kelsey bag.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the Third Annual Chief Charles H. Steele Public Safety Award.
If Chief Stokes is here? All right, well, we'll come back to that one then. Next is, Mr. City Attorney, what's the next item on the agenda?
Next is, Mr. Mayor, petitions, reports.
I guess--
Next on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by the committees.
I think Mr. Ellison's mic's not working. If someone could get that fixed. Is there any other personnel that would like to present a report? Alderman Lippman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, the Environmental Matters Committee met, and the one thing I'd like to point out, I appreciate the work of Dr. Nash and Mr. Gutwold to improve the school capacity chart. It previously was showing either open or closed and the committee asked to follow the legislation by showing how many seats were either left or over, because that is a difference in the adequate public facilities ordinance that we passed versus the county. And Dr. Nash kindly updated the chart and we received it and I find it very helpful the way it is, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. The Public Safety Committee met on September 14th. We took up O-3617 wheel immobilization devices, postponed action on that. We took up O-3717, also postponed action. O-4017 recommended favorably. R-2317 recommended postponement, and I think that was it. On another committee report, I attended LGAG, the Local Government Advisory Commission that met in Shepherdstown, West Virginia on last Thursday and Friday. We had an update from the Environmental Protection Agency and talked about the new timelines for the Chesapeake Bay cleanup modules. So I will send a written report to my colleagues on that within the next couple of days. Thank you.
Alderman Panaliti?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, the Economic Matters Committee has not met since our last council meeting. However, we are meeting on October 16th at 6:30 PM right here in council chambers. We will take up matters that have been assigned to us at that time. Thank you.
Alderman Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing and Welfare Committee, Housing and Community Development Committees will be meeting next on October 17th at 7:30 right here at its chambers.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is comments by the general public.
All right. During comments by the general public, you may speak on anything not already scheduled for a public hearing. We have two people sign up to speak, Ellie Tierney-- Oh. --and Robert Eads. Oh, I'm sorry, Ellie Tierney, William Rau, and Robert Eads. And as always, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, hi. My name's Ellie Tierney and I reside at 85 East Street, and I'm speaking tonight as a resident in the historic district, and it's in regard to O-3417, which I understand is not scheduled for a public hearing from the city clerk. It's in the Planning Commission, so I can speak to it now. Is that correct? There wasn't a sign-up sheet for it to be on public hearing, O-3417.
O-34--
The public hearing was left open for that, for the purpose of receiving the Planning Commission findings. Okay, so can I speak of it now? Can I speak now?
Yes, under petitions, you can speak on.
Okay.
On anything.
All right. Okay. The reason why I'm testifying on this is that the last city council meeting, a couple of people testified, and I think the whole gist of the concern and the objection was just sort of missed in the dialogue about, you know, HPC and the election and all kind of controversial stuff, and I just, in the spirit of the language, I just, I just need to address this. As you know, the mural, in the mural review, Judge McKenna did a meticulous review of the, of the law and said that, that the law in certain respects was a little bit of an overreach and they had, and HPC had to change some of the language in that respect. And so this is an attempt at that change, and the wording that, that was substituted, and bear with me as I read it, this is right from the legislation, I won't say it all here, but just abbreviated, "In reviewing applications, the commission shall give consideration to the historic, cultural, archaeological, or architectural significance of the landmark, blah, 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 and significance of the surrounding area, the relationship, scale, proportion, arrangement, texture." And the replaced words are "and any other relevant and probative factors." Those words were added, "and any other relevant and probative factors," probative meaning, you know, supportive or confirming. And let me put it this way, when I was, when I worked in construction, we would have these scope of works to subcontractors and they would read "include but not limited to." That language, if you look up in LexisNexis, created thousands and thousands of lawsuits because the wording was so open-ended, include but not limited to. This language is just as open-ended, relevant and probative, any other relevant and probative factors. And I just think that we need some public input on this before it's legislated and so I guess in that respect, I'm asking for it to be postponed so that we could get some more public input into the whole revision of the HPC law, because as you know, the last time we tried to revise the HPC law, it was, it was, it needed a lot of public input beforehand. It's very controversial and we just need to get it right this time, so thank you.
Mr. Rau?
Good evening, everyone. I come in peace, even though I'm sure you all are like, what's happening next? And I do want to preface what I'm going to say with the fact that Alderwoman Finlayson did speak of the kind of unrest that happens around election time, which is absolutely true. I actually tend to look at it as, as something pretty exciting and invigorating because it, it, it brings the attention of citizens in a city to pay attention to some of their deeper issues that affect them day-to-day. So while I do agree with you, I think there's some goodness that comes out of that craziness. And I preface it with that because I don't consider myself a representative of anyone and I have no political aspirations, but I do believe that it's best to speak and act and use your kind of wherewithal to act on behalf of those who possibly cannot act, you know, on a night like tonight when you look in the crowd, when they're on the table. So having said that, my responses and my statement and questions have more to do with the potential nomination of the board member for the Housing Authority. And it, it has a lot to do with due diligence and the fact that due diligence is actually allowing the public, as well as those that are making decisions on confirmations, to be fully aware of all of the ins and outs of things that precede that nomination or confirmation. So we're not only talking about the voting aspect of it for you all, but we're also talking about citizens that are affected by that particular seat that is available. And I say that because in most of the conversations I've had with people on the street and people who actually live in, in some of those areas, they have no idea who Corey Johnson is or the implications of adding another person right now in this city. And in order to have a fair and full process, it's my observation that we have, that all of those residents should have access to all relevant information and documents as it relates to the health insolvency of HACCA, of HACCA right now. And that's an important thing to me because in my research and in others' research, we do know that the Housing Authority has gone through several tough times, as well as turnover and some other things, and by proxy, the city of Annapolis and our current mayor. And so what I'm saying all this to say that I believe that, that right now, to nominate someone or to confirm someone is extremely and extraordinarily time-sensitive because it isn't responsive to the community. It appears as though, on what I'm hearing tonight, that it may not utterly be responsible to the city council as a body and to the residents who will be affected by these decisions, both operationally and administratively. But I want to, I want to end it with this. These are the mayor's words himself in the Capitol, and I quote, "I have chosen each nominee for the board very carefully, intending or intending that they represent the needs of the community," Panaliti said. "This nomination will put in place the much-needed public safety component that will work with Annapolis police officers to continue creating a trusting environment between residents and law enforcement." My belief and in my kind of armchair observation, this appears to be an attempt-- And that's an important thing to me because in my research and in others' research, we do know that the Housing Authority has gone through several tough times, as well as turnover and some other things, and, and by proxy, the city of Annapolis and our current mayor. And so what I'm saying all this to say that I believe that, that right now, to nominate someone or to confirm someone is extremely and extraordinarily time-sensitive because it isn't responsive to the community. It appears as though, on what I'm hearing tonight, that it may not utterly be responsible to the city council as a body and to the residents who will be affected by these decisions, both operationally and administratively. But I want to, I want to end it with this. These are the mayor's words himself in the Capitol, and I quote, "I have chosen each nominee for the board very carefully, intending or intending that they represent the needs of the community," Panalete said. "This nomination will put in place the much-needed public safety component that will work with Annapolis police officers to continue creating a trusting environment between residents and law enforcement." My belief and in my kind of armchair observation, this appears to be an attempt to kind of what they call over-position or imbalance a commission at a very crucial time. Because our current mayor has had an opportunity in the past to put other people on that board. In the rest of the month, we're having a major general election. So my series of questions are this. Is this an attempt to control the HACCA board by over-proportionally stacking party representation and thereby influencing development and contractual decisions that are going to be made by that commission and not particularly by this body? My next question is, why is this being done this close to our general election, which again is less than a month away? And another question, which is an uninformed question, but why is Deborah Johnson, a resident of Housing Authority, a recipient of the Martin Luther King Jr. Award, a black woman of stature and relevant experience, who by the way holds a master's degree in public administration, I'm not sure of why she's being replaced after only two years on the board? My last question is, why haven't we been focusing and why aren't we right now focusing on policing in the communities? And when I say policing in the communities, I don't mean adding more police officers. Instead of banning lists and beefed-up security and focusing on security, because right now...
I'm going to have to ask you to summarize.
Okay. This is my last sentence. But I'll, because you, you interrupted me, not interrupted me, but because I probably wasn't heard, there's a focus on the banning list. There's a focus on the banning list, which you all have already been sued over, and there's a consent decree that must be followed. But I, in reading in the documentation, you all are egregiously speaking of a banning list in the future plan. And if anyone needs any information from me, I can forward something from the ACLU because it's discriminatory and it's unconstitutional.
Mr. Rowell, you're, you're over your time.
All right. The last sentence, the last one is this.
I've given you an extra minute, though.
All right. Thank you, sir. Why not focus on jobs and programming in the community and not at this last minute, show us more police officers and also talk about a security guy to be on the commission? Peace and love. Thank you.
Thank you. So we don't have time to get into all of it, but I'll say this. You know, since I've been mayor, I think Alderman Lippman spoke very eloquently to the people that serve on boards and commissions. They're thankless jobs. Not one person on a board or commission gets paid, and they work long hours and they sit in this chamber for very long nights. I think if you look at the people I've put on that board, whether it's Sandra Chapman, Chip Dorden, Chris Flynn, Kimberly, they all bring unique experiences to it. It's hard to find people to serve on the Housing Authority Board. Normally, when I ask someone, would you like to serve on a board, planning, liquor, wrecking parks, people always say yes. I've been turned down more for the Housing Authority Board than every other board in the city combined. So whenever I find new people, I bring them up for nomination. It's not a matter of taking control. The mayor appoints people as they become vacancies, and I haven't really had a fifth vote until probably July. But I think he brings a unique set of skills, especially in the security area, and we are changing the dynamic. You know, there's 16 new community policing initiatives that are underway, with the officers getting out of their cars, building trust. So we are doing all of these things that are happening in the community. I think he has a unique skill set. I think he's going to work very well for the community. Alderwoman Pendel Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rowell, I know you have in the past expressed a lot of angst regarding public safety and policing in the housing community. And I'm going to assume that that's part of your trepidation with this nomination. I recall, ooh, maybe two years ago, there was another gentleman that we were putting into a position, Mr. Matthews. Was there the same trepidation that you had? I don't know Mr. Brown, or the gentleman that's, I haven't, put it this, Mr. Johnson. I may know him if I see his face, but offhand, the, the name doesn't ring a bell. But did you express the same trepidation regarding Mr. Matthews during that time? I'm just trying to get a context.
So we're full disclosure, Mr. Matthews is my cousin. But, so I, I, actually, what's interesting is, I did also oppose that as well, because I'll repeat, and this is pretty simple stuff. Like, I want you all to accumulatively look at the amount of time you've spent talking about security and law enforcement and police officers. Isn't a personal argument of mine, it's logical. You're spending way more time focusing on security and police officers. I want to hear one, one proposition, one thing where the city is investing. This is out of love. Where the city is investing in children and families.
Okay, Mr. Rowell, let me tell you. Did you read my op-ed in the Capitol on August the 9th?
I did, but you're one person. I want to hear our mayor speak about that and not police officers.
Well, wait a minute. We, we operate, this, this is my, this is how I see it.
Right.
This is the, the framework from which I come. We operate as a body. If, if I do something, say the two job fairs that we had last year, June and October.
Right.
The mayor spearheaded a hiring event, and I'm not taking up for anybody here, don't get me wrong. I'm just giving out the facts. The mayor wanted to spearhead a hiring event back in December for the, through Antirunde Workforce Development, through the, for the casino. I'll be perfectly honest, the mayor wanted to do a second chance job fair this year. I was hesitant, only because I know it takes a lot of effort to get someone prepared, whether it's the applicant or the businessperson themselves. So I was pretty much saying no. The mayor was insistent, so I said, okay, let's try it, Antirunde Workforce. There were 135 people who came. I was there for the entire day. Antirunde Workforce Development will be coming to the city. They're in the process of moving here, hiring a person, a full workforce specialist, to be here Monday through Friday at the Stanton Community Center. They will also have on staff a person called a youth career coach. That person will be at Annapolis High School two days a week. That person will be looking at not the students that are college-bound, not the students they couldn't get in the competitive CAT South program, but those who graduate on June the 5th and have no idea of what they're going to do on June the 6th. We sat in a meeting with Sue Chittam, who's the principal, about three weeks ago, it was about seven of us. Mrs. Chittam was so excited, she started making a list of the students that she wants in that program this year, as well as students who come, who have graduated this past May and last year, who just come to the school looking for something. So we're on that track. We have the Community Ambassadors Program at Annapolis High School. The, I went to the city manager, the mayor, and asked for funds for that. The Strengthening Families Program through the Health Department, it's at my school, that's why I was late tonight, because I'm the coordinator, the layers-on at my school. That program will be helping the Bay Ridge Gardens community, Newtown 20 community, as well as the Bow Water community. So we need, they're unprecedented, and maybe some of it is because I've worked for the Health Department before, I'm working for the school system, and we've had unprecedented partnerships with those entities that we've never had before. Like I said, what I've heard pastors say, when one shines, all shine. I couldn't do it by myself. I have to have the, the, the support, the assistance, the encouragement of this body, this auspicious body that sits here tonight. I'm not going to take all the credit, okay? I may have been the one who spearheaded it, but we're all in this as a team, and that's how I see this. Now, I'm not taking up for the mayor or anybody else up here, or you or whomever. All I'm saying is, it needs to be a holistic approach. When we see those names coming through from the HACCA, we've got a financial person, Mrs., the lady who's in, Ms. Wilborn, came from DC and knows HACCA community, she's also an attorney. So we've got different pieces of the puzzle to address it. We've got somebody on there who's savvy in real estate. We would be, I think, an awful body if we didn't have somebody on there who could address public safety, whether it's from a standpoint of looking at grants to get even other things through the Police Department, whether it's education or health. So we do need, as you've often said, a holistic approach to this. But I understand where you're coming from. Don't think it does not go unnoticed, but we have to look at it from a holistic point of view. We cannot overlook community policing. We cannot do that. We can't overlook security. That's a critical part, along with education and health and those factors. We need all of that to, to correct and to challenge. Also, we're going to launch on, the week of October 23rd, the Street Corner Ministries, where churches have adopted each community. And what we'll be doing is, the pastors will be going into those communities or transporting those folks into their, into their church, and we're going to have services. So it's, so it's a lot going on. Everybody doesn't know about it. We don't always have to toot the horns, but people know there's something going on. It takes a little bit of time, it takes some money, it takes strategy, it gets people on board, we're doing partnerships that are unprecedented, that we've never done before.
And I thank you so much for taking the time to explain all of that. Not negating any of that. The, I agree it takes time to do programming, it takes time to pull down grant monies. I agree with all of that, because I was in philanthropy for a while. What I will say, though, is as a person, a community person, as a layman who doesn't, who's not privy to what's going to happen, what happens, what it looks like, and even as we describe it, is you, that quickly, you announce a police officer, they're now going to be out doing what they do. And, and again, we, what's solitarily in the budget and what you do talk about is law enforcement. But when, but when we talk about, like, community-level investment, it's, we got to get churches and we got to get, we got to go get other programs in other counties, and what I'm saying is, not negating anything you said. As easily as you say you are going to enforce and incarcerate and have, have security, as a human being, like, for humanity, you have to balance that literally with saying, and equally right now, right now, we have this amount of money and this amount of services for the community. You can't say, these officers are already gone, we got them suited, they're trained, but then say, oh, but, you know, we, you know, we're going to train for some other stuff. So that's all I'm saying to you all as a body, is, as a person who listens to this and hears this, that's just what it sounds like.
Well, let, let me tell you, last year...
But that doesn't negate what you said.
Okay, but let me tell you about the Police Department. Last year, went to the Police Department and asked them, would they participate in a program at Annapolis High School for the Black History Club, as well as the Tuesday Help Day students?
Right.
Right before Christmas, there were three components. The officers, as they normally do, go to the different communities and participate in giving out gifts and camaraderie and that sort of thing, for elementary school. For middle school, they met the students as they dismounted the buses in the afternoon, gave them a nice greeting card and, and a little candy cane. For the high school students, the city paid for a complete meal for those students at Annapolis High and a party. Well, we'll call it a party. It was a fun-time event, and they each went home with a little gift bag for that. We did the same thing in May, to send them off in the summer and say, have a good summer, same thing, nice little card, signed by all the council people, the mayor, as well as folks in the community. We did that. We're going to do it again this Christmas. The police also do a program at Georgetown East called Character Counts. Patty Norris does that, and I believe Lieutenant Lowe has joined in on that program. I'm not going to list all of them, but they're all programs that, that are school-based, where the officers are seen as, for lack of a better term, human.
Right.
And so we try to balance out that with when there's someone in a housing community that's not supposed to be there or whatever, I'm not going to get into the, the technical details. Then there's more, I think, of an appreciation as to, oh, yes, they're doing these things on the left and they're doing these things on the right. But all I'm saying is, it all has to be a balanced approach.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. I apologize.
Sir, no, 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 I think this was well worth the time.
Okay.
You bring items to our, our forefront, and they need to be brought.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
He did ask me a direct question, which I want to answer, though, about. What else are we, what else are we doing? And thank you, by the way, I can't begin to repeat everything you said, but particularly on the second chance job fair in the Maryland Live when you've been working with me, because that's what people talk about. We want jobs and opportunity. So we got it in the HACCA newsletter. We said, Maryland Live, second chance, we did one for the Energy Park, we want to give people more opportunities. We also said they need quality of life issues. You know, the city never inspected units of the Housing Authority. We said, don't worry about it, it's not that important. I said, I'm the mayor of everyone, and I'm going to demand inspections. I see Mr. Gutwold in the front, I got a folder this thick of all the things we've made HACCA fix for people's quality of life over day-to-day. I saw people didn't have internet, right? It was too expensive. So we worked with Comcast, and Annapolis is the first city in the state of Maryland out of 157 to offer free and reduced internet to all of the residents, not just kids at school at $999 a month. It's a digital divide. How do you find the job? How do you learn in school without the internet going forward to it? We need a basketball court in Newtown 20. City's not supposed to pay for it, but we did it because we cared about people and their quality of life. So there's a lot of things that are going on that people don't know or talk about, but we're making sure we're investing in these communities.
And thank you for that. And I want to tell you, this, again, from the heart, like, as a person, that sounds, that, like, basketball courts and internet, those are, those are not, like, primary necessities for people to raise families in those environments. They don't have to have those things. What I, again, just so that we're clear, what I'm speaking of, and maybe this is, maybe I, I did a report that I gave to the HACCA Commission about environmental justice, about, about wealth development, about understanding the idea of matriculation. You don't have people in public housing, generationally, because it harms them and it harms our city. So when we start talking about deeper, more like, things that, that we are bringing to the table that are really, they're systemic, right? It's, I'm, I'm saying this again, and for improvement purposes. Like, it has nothing to do with law enforcement, it has nothing to do with sports and basketball. It's like the same stuff we want with our children, which is basic, like, like, services, like, after school. When you start talking about computers and not internet, and you start talking about, about wealth building, and you start talking about bringing people in to talk to them, about banking accounts, and about the impact that slavery has had on a population of people that are dependent, then we're, then we're talking real. But law enforcement and sports and recreation and all of that, those are outliers to me. Those are things they can live without.
Alder, Alderwoman Pendel Charles, and we have to move on.
Mr. Rowell, I'm going to, I'm going to get a little personal here. Mr. Rowell?
I'm sorry.
I'm going to get a little personal here. My husband is from Port Arthur, Texas, which is on the Louisiana border. Played and excelled in three sports in high school, football, basketball, and track. Had no clue, nobody in his family ever even, probably hardly could spell the word college. Okay? Decided he was going to college only to play football. Was not academically inclined to do anything, basically. Just wanted to play football. Got to Morgan State University, played football, and realized after about four years that he could do this thing. Finished in five years, has been at the Board of Education as a senior accountant for 32 years. Don't tell me, don't tell me that sport is not a catalyst...
No, I didn't say that.
Wait a minute. Is not a catalyst to someone who can better themselves and their lot?
I didn't say that. What I said was...
Now, I'm going to get to tech, let me, let me finish. Let me finish.
Okay.
Technology.
Right.
Getting on the internet and finding out what's available, whether it's jobs, education, Comcast has had this program for several years. It has been, we did several years ago, basically giving out free computers for people and hooking them into Comcast so they could be technologically savvy. Yes. Yes. 2006. I did it, I, I did it myself.
But the kid, I'm talking about the children, like, right, this fiscal year.
Okay. But we're going to get, Mr. Rowell, Mr. Rowell, we're going to get to that.
I know.
We're going to get to that.
But I wasn't attacking sports. What I'm saying to you is, if, and the list of things you list to me is a basketball court. When I'm, when I'm here talking about, I'm, right, like, we talk about basketball...
It's a catalyst, Mr. Rowell, it's a catalyst, it's a catalyst for some folk. And I'm here as a personal testimony for my husband. Otherwise, he never would have even thought about college. Never.
I, I absolutely, I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree. You know I would have more stuff to say, but out of respect for everyone's time.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
But this was worth the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Eads?
I see how much time I got here. Good evening, all the men, all the women. Mr. Mayor, I'm here today because we're back at Housing Authority. I'm here today because we're back at Housing Authority. And I like sitting at this end of the checkerboard, playing a little bit of chess. You started out your mayorship with a promise to get rid of Carl Snowden. I don't know whether that was supposed to better the Housing Authority or improve the Housing Authority or whatever. The elite colleague of people that you just named, that you have purged the Housing Authority board with, know nothing about the community that they're supposed to serve. Nothing. Never seen them walk, never seen them come to a person of my status, ask what's going on in the communities, what's needed in the community. What I have seen in the last four years is the attempt to eliminate and get rid of public housing. No matter how I stress up, no matter how I may seem, Mr. Chip Doughty, a man who ran a multi-billion-dollar establishment, has done nothing to uplift the public housing. They've attempted runaway people who've come places. Mr. Chip Doughty, for three or four months, was the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners. And you know what he did? He allowed the same elevating company, elevator company, that fixes the high-rise Glenwood Elevators for the last, how many years? He renewed their contract, knowing that these elevators break down one or two times a week, a month, have left senior citizens in the elevators in a building with no elevator, people who are in wheelchairs who can't move. Mr. Dixon, who's, all of these people you're supposed to bring on with all this expertise, have done nothing to improve the quality of life for the people in public housing, the poor people. You spoke of the inspections. For every inspection of that sheet that you got that you said they'd done something, I could take you to houses with people, with sheets that big, where housing has not improved at all. They have not improved at all. The conditions that our people live in have not improved at all. The only thing your people ever came up with in agreement with, we need to sell this, we need to sell that, we need to downsize public housing. When I first started living in public housing, there was eleven-hundred-and-four units. We're down to, I think, now seven-twenty. All that's happening is elimination, elimination, elimination. With the people that you claim to put in place, that's gonna better the community. Bring the community people in here. Or have open house, ask everybody in public housing to come in here and tell me where they see where you have improved anything in your leadership of directing public housing. Now, I would like to ask this one question, so I don't put my foot in my mouth before I have to sit down. This guy you're bringing on, Mr. Carl Jones, is that his correct name?
Corey Johnson.
Corey Johnson, I'm sorry, I don't know. From the stats that I saw you just read, I know he doesn't live in public housing. He makes too much money for all those wonderful jobs that he's had. And I give him kudos for uplifting himself. And I'm gonna tell each, and every one of you people, I'm sorry, each and every one of you, all the persons, excuse me for using the word "you people." I don't like people to use that word to me. I apologize. Are you familiar with the state law? Well, when I was working with Ellen Moya, and we wanted to increase the Board of Commissioners, we went to the state, because those are the ones who can give you permission to add more commissioners onto the board. We tried to get nine. They said, no, we'll take it from five to seven. Under these conditions, you have to have one senior representative from the resident, from the community, and one representative from the community. Ms. Jackie Wells represents the senior. Ms. Debbie Johnson represents the resident of board, or member on the Board of Commissioners. If this gentleman that you're choosing does not live in public housing, you're breaking state law by nominating him. You're breaking state law. Check it out.
I'm gonna have to ask you to summarize.
I just summarized. If y'all choose anybody-
We, Mr. Eads, we heard.
Okay, Mr. Rao had a couple extra- Mr. Rao had a couple extra minutes. Give me two. Give me two.
No.
Give me two.
Mr. Eads-
Because I want y'all to know-
Mr. Eads, you've had more time than any person, probably in the history of Annapolis, addressing.
Not tonight, I have, not tonight.
Well, you can't get it every night. Mr. Eads, we have to summarize.
If y'all elect anybody that's not a resident of public housing, you're breaking state law. Help me with ABLG, and we will sue. And the last time I used ABLG, we were two.
You realize Sandra Chapman, Sandra Chapman lives in public housing.
So Sandra Chapman is not a representative. She's already on the board as your Board of Commissioner. You can't replace her and put her in another position and then come back and put somebody else in. Try it.
Well, we'll take a look.
Try this.
I'm not trying it.
You know, Mr. Eads, as much as Mrs. Chapman is in your office-
Mr. Eads, I'm gonna need you to sit down, because-
Yes, and as much as Mrs. Chapman is down here in your office with you, I know that, too.
All right. Now, we're moving on from there. There's too many falsehoods to go on. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Seeing no movements, I declare comments by the general public closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
We had one person, we'll let her come in.
I have a question.
Sure.
If somebody could explain the Ross Grant to me, R-O-S-S grant? I think it has to do with the housing.
It does. It's a detailed thing. If you'd like, I have someone from my staff come by and they can fill you in on it.
Okay.
Yep. Well, we're gonna move on, because we've already closed the hearing. But, Mr. Rao, we're gonna move on. No, we're gonna move on. We are gonna move on. You can't just get up and scream in the meeting. We've gone on, we're gonna go back to the agenda, and we're moving forward.
Can you please give us a summary of the Ross Grant? And if you can't, this is televised, and just, I guess you could say for due process, you probably would wanna give a little bit about what the Ross Grant is.
We're gonna move on. Mr. Gutwold wants to give an explanation, he could, but we're gonna go on. We skipped it. This is comments- I'm gonna ask you to sit down.
It's televised.
Please sit down.
Can you give us a summary?
We're moving on, we're moving on to the next item. Please sit down, been disruptive. We skipped over the agenda, because Chief Stokes had to step out, so we're gonna go back to it for the Chief Steele Award.
Each year, for the last three years, we present the Chief Charles H. Steele Public Safety Award. The Chief Steele, if you don't know, was the department's first fire chief. He started as fire chief in nineteen-sixty-four and worked until nineteen-eighty-seven. The Chief Steele, as the first fire chief, laid a foundation for the modern-day Annapolis Fire Department. So a couple of years ago, in partnership with the Public Safety Committee, they asked if we could develop an award that we could present every year during Fire Prevention Week, that would recognize a person in the department who's done a lot to either improve the Annapolis Fire Department, someone who's committed to and dedicated to our department to make it better, or have some, of course, they have done something that has improved the image of the Annapolis Fire Department. So as I said, we present it each year during Fire Prevention Week. And this year, and we always keep it a secret, who the person is who's gonna get this award. So this person tonight that's gonna receive this award, and we've only done three, we only do one board a year, this person has done a great job of public education. He's taken public education and moved it to a new level. He's pushed our smoke detector program greatly. We're almost done our smoke detector program. We started that about four years ago. We went around the lot, everybody's doing work, make sure every citizen had a working smoke detector. And that's almost done. He's been pushing that program very hard. He's done a lot with community outreach, and this is very important. He's done a lot with youth programs and in the schools. He goes to schools and does a lot of fire prevention, fire safety talks. He also goes to public housing with his senior citizens, does a lot about senior citizen fire safety and not only fire safety, but overall safety, trip hazards and those type of things for senior citizens. He's also involved with, and this was mentioned earlier, APD's Character Counts Program. We're very proud of that. He's taken our public information program to new heights. You hear him all the time on WNEV radio, our hometown station. And one of the things he's done, and I'll be honest, he's done a lot with Facebook and social media. And I was anti-social media. I was, every time you pick up a fire department magazine in this country, there's some article about some fire party getting in trouble on social media. So I was, I was very hesitant to let him do social media, but he's done a fantastic job with it. We have, like, thousands and thousands of people on Twitter and Facebook and Nextdoor and you name it, it's out there. He's out there, he's pushing the Annapolis Fire Department and pushing public safety. This guy has made the Annapolis City a safer place to be. He's improved our image greatly, the Annapolis Fire Department. And, you know, overall, this is a good guy. This is one of the good things about this program, he's just a good guy. So it's a great honor having him tonight to give us the fire party, Kenny White.
Congratulations.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, next item on the agenda is an update from you.
All right. Since our last council meeting, we've had a lot going on. So on October the fourth, I went before the Lieutenant Governor, the Comptroller, and the Treasurer for the state of Maryland, and we got our open space money for the purchase of the land at Parkside Preserve. We had agreed to it, the state approved the money, so the city won't have to contribute towards that. The twenty-two lots that were plotted, you know, it's the first time the city's ever done it, and I appreciate everyone in the council's support on that. We've taken land that was scheduled for development, and it'll be put into a park in easement in perpetuity. In Ward Three, Rhonda Pendell-Charles and I were at the Chambers Park Event, which is a very nice event community, I think there's over one-hundred-and-fifty people there. I attended the Seeds for Successive in Eastport, which is a great group of volunteers. Besides boards and commissions, if you added up the number of nonprofit and charities and volunteer hours, it's incredible that people are doing it in the city. I went to a meeting for the Spa Creek Restoration. It's the first environmental project that we're teaming up with, with the Housing Authority. And one of the things we've seen is government can't do it all, and neither can the public on its own. So you've seen things where St. Luke's Church is working together, they got approval for. I believe St. Mary's was the first church to get the Environmental Award. Baywood's, the Senior Living Center. So we're getting restaurants, businesses, individuals to get involved. So partnering with the Housing Authority is a great step going forward, and it's at Hawkins Cove. Oh, I wanna invite everyone to a groundbreaking tomorrow of the city's first dog park. It's at the Naval Academy Athletic Association on the field. Come by tomorrow at noon for that. And that concludes my update from the mayor. And before we go on, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Our order, Pam?
It'll actually be at the corner of Fergate Road and Cedar Park Road, for those that would like to attend. Twelve o'clock noon. It's the announcement and the formal ceremony. Hopefully, we'll have it up and going within a few weeks.
Thank you.
And thank you to the N-A-A.
Thank you. We'll reconvene in five minutes. We'll reconvene in five minutes. So no one else can leave. We're going to be at a quorum issue if anybody else leaves, so. Well, let's get back in session first, then we're going to adjourn. We're now back in session. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, which includes the Journal of Proceedings, regular meeting minutes, and then some second readers, R 2617 Community Development Block Grant Program, the 2017 Amended Citizen Participation Plan, and also R 2817, which is the Police and Fire Retirement Plan and IRS amended.
Is there any objection to the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Well, Alderman Littman left, so I'm the Kirby.
The lone Alderman.
Aye.
How about Mayor Pan Lee?
Yeah, aye.
I was confused. Okay, let's start on the side. Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Charles.
Aye.
And Alderman Pendleis.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Thank you. The next item tonight is the public hearing on O 3817, which was continued from the last meeting. On O 3817, which would allow indoor theaters in the professional office zoning district.
I accept into the record a memorandum to the Annapolis City Council from the Planning Commission dated September 27, 2017, and a memorandum from Pete Gutwell, Director of Planning and Zoning, dated August 27, 2017. I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, that, that public hearing was left open only for the purpose of doing what you just did, accepting those findings and see the record.
Thank you.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is O 3417. O 3417, which has to do with approvals of exterior changes in the historic district. And this hearing was also left open for the purpose of accepting the Planning Commission findings.
Acceptance to the record, the recommendations from the Planning Commission, and the public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is public hearings beginning with O 3517, which has to do with revisions to development review.
Before I go to that, I want to clarify the further statement on that. We accepted a record of memorandum to the Annapolis City Council from the Planning Commission on September the 27th, and from the Director of Planning and Zoning on September the 5th, 2017. For O 3517, first three people to sign up to speak, Jeff Jacobson, William Rowell, and E.J. Rumke. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Jeff Jacobson, I have an office at 410 Ralph Boulevard.
Could you hit the button, I don't think your mic's on?
Start over, hear me? I'm Jeff Jacobson, I have an office at 410 Ralph Boulevard. I want to thank the mayor and the council members for allowing me to speak today. I'm a, I'm a principal at Solstice Partners, we're developers. We have a real estate development firm, and we currently have two projects here in Annapolis. One's under construction at 706 Giddings Avenue, and another's been in planning for a while, it's the Eastport Shopping Center. As a matter of principle and practice, our firm approaches each project with great care and substantial community outreach. We, we've won a lot of awards, we involve the community early and often, and in principle, I have no issue with community involvement and the ordinance or the intended, or stated goals of the ordinance to involve the community. Part of O 3517 attempts to standardize community input, which in theory, again, I have no issue with. But I think the ordinance is poorly drafted, and there's lasting unintended consequences if passed as written. I think it needs a, a big look. I think there's a lot of gaps. O 35 would affect projects both large and small. Projects are classified as major site design if a minimum of 20% renovation or alteration of floor or parking area is planned. This ordinance would diminish the authority of the cities' planning professionals who are trained to evaluate site design and the built environment within the city. That's why these guys are here in planning. I value the Planning Commission, but these are the guys who should be interpreting things. These are the guys who understand planning, and that, that's what they do for a living. The planning process and code are already challenging enough. This ordinance would cause further complication and delays into an already confusing and timely process. It's important, it's important to understand the quantifiable impacts of this ordinance. If I use 706 Giddings as an example, here's what O 35 would have done to that project. It would have increased entitlement and processing timeline by what we guess about six to eight months. What does that mean? It means it would increase the project cost by $150,000 to $200,000. This is in interest carry, this is in legal fees, this is in consulting, this is design. And it would then, so where does that money come from? Well, ultimately, it has to get passed on to the end user. So on that project, it would mean increased rent to each small business or tenant of that building for over $89,000 per tenant over the lease term. For residential project, either rents would have to be higher, or the ultimate sales price on a for-sale product would have to be there to support these impacts. This ordinance would make the city of Annapolis a less desirable, more expensive place to do business, and a more uncertain environment for any developer or landowner to consider new projects or even improvements to existing properties. I urge you to take these points into consideration if and when you cast your vote on O 35. And lastly, I've spoken to many members of the local real estate community, and there has been no input taken from the private sector in drafting this ordinance, and its impact has not been evaluated comprehensively. Ultimately, I believe that this is passed without engaging both sides of this topic. Nothing's going to happen in the city of Annapolis for a long time with development and improvement of properties that already exist. Moving forward, we ask that you engage the real estate community in a productive dialogue about advancing the city. We understand there's a dire for increased transparency in the planning process, and believe me, we share it because we think it's broken as well. But I don't think this ordinance is going to get you the results that you're looking for. Thank you.
E.J. Rumke and Rob Savage?
Hello, my name is E.J. Rumke, and I live at 1101 Poplar Avenue in Homewood. I'm a Ward Two resident and also a business owner in Annapolis. I'm a principal at MRE Capital. We're a local commercial real estate investment and development firm, and right now, our office is currently on West Street. MRE Capital, we're, we're a new group in town. We started about a year ago, but even though we're just about a year old, we already have quite a few projects in the city right now. We're actually partnering with Jeff and Solstice Partners on the office redevelopment at Giddings Avenue in West Annapolis, right behind the Graut Shopping Center. We're also working on a project in Ward One right now at the Old York Flowers, right on State Circle. And then we also have a couple of other properties throughout the city where we're in the early stages of, of the development and planning process. What I want to speak to you guys about is there's an attachment in the file for this, for this ordinance called the fiscal impact note. And at the bottom of this note, what it says is there's no fiscal impact associated with this legislation. So when I first saw that, I could not wrap my head around how something like this couldn't have a fiscal impact on the city. So I immediately reached out to Hollis Minor, who runs economic development for, for the city, and I asked Hollis, I said, how, how is this calculated? How, how is it that there's no fiscal impact on, on Annapolis? And what she told me is that all that looks at is whether there's a change to the city's budget or not, whether that goes up. It, it has no effect on, or any consideration for, for external or indirect impacts that O 35 might have on the city. So what I'd like to, what I'd like to tell you is I, I, there's absolutely going to be a fiscal impact on the city of Annapolis if this legislation is passed. And I think what's going to happen are really two things. The first is that because of the additional uncertainty in cost that this O 35 would have on development projects, you're going to have a lot of people that are just simply going to decide not to invest their time and money in Annapolis. You know, if the city doesn't have the, the private sector investing in the buildings and infrastructure and planning and improvements in the city, the city of Annapolis is not going to grow, and that is an absolute fiscal impact on the city of Annapolis. The second thing that I think's going to happen is that for the people that do stay in the city and do decide to continue to work and do these projects, the projects are going to cost more money. Jeff noted that there's going to be increased legal fees and interest carry and design fees and things like that. What's going to happen is the developer is going to, they're going to bear the burden of that cost early on in the process, but then that cost is going to trickle down to the end consumer. So first, it's going to start with having to charge these tenants higher rent. And then because of these tenants, whether they're selling a good or delivering a service or something like that, they're going to have to charge more money to, to offer up those goods and services. And at the end of it, the, the end consumer is going to have to pay more to consume in the city of Annapolis. And these, these are all the, you know, these, this is a direct impact on all the residents that you guys represent. So in conclusion, I urge you guys all to, to vote against this proposed legislation. I think at the core of O 35, it's an attempt to create more transparency in the development process. And I applaud these efforts, and I welcome them, and I welcome change to the current process in Annapolis. But this legislation does not get the result you're looking for. I encourage you not to rush this legislation through before this upcoming election, and actually take some time to gather input and solicit feedback from the development community on how we can make, collectively make the development process better for both citizens, developers, the planning office, the council, the commission, and everyone else. Thank you.
Alderman Pan?
Mr. Rumke, do you have any specific suggestions that might make this more, more tolerable to folks in the development community?
I, I think what, what I struggle with is-
Actually, for all of us.
Sure. I think the requirements, as it's written right now, the requirements to give notice to all these different community groups, and it's very vague as it's written. So I, I know that, I think you guys received some proposed amendments from Alan Hyatt, either last Friday or-
You've seen those?
I have seen those, and I, I spoke with Alan about them, and I, I agree with all, all of his proposed amendments.
Thank you.
Alderman Pendell-Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rumke, you indicated that you're looking at some development possibly in Wards One and Two?
Right now, the projects that we currently have are in Wards One, Two, and, yeah, One and Two.
Nothing in Three?
Haven't looked in Three, no, haven't been able to find-
Then if you're looking for something in Three, you need to speak with us.
I'll come find you afterwards, all right?
If you look, if you see something in Ward- If you look, if you see something in Ward Three, then you need to come to the community and talk to us about it.
Absolutely. I, I, I think for any development project to be successful, you need to get community input, uh, and we'll, we'll absolutely talk to the, the community groups in, in all the wards that we're looking to do projects.
Fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The letter from Alan Hyatt, part of the records, say good features, but I, I don't have it printed down here, but I know that we all received it.
That's fine. Thank you, you beat me to the ask. Uh, so, Rob Savage, 12 Windus Berlaine. Um, so, I'm here to testify in support of this ordinance. The current system's not really working as well as it could be. Uh, first of all, people aren't, excuse me, people aren't always notified sufficiently when we have upcoming projects. One example that happened in my ward was a Starbucks project, and regardless of the merits, uh, the point was a whole, a new building is going to be constructed across from the Giant, and people didn't really have sufficient notification. There was nothing in the paper, um, there was nothing sent out to the community, it was just, uh, the only way you could find out is by looking at the planning zoning list of projects, and one month it was under review, and next month it was approved, so there's no notification to the community. I think this ordinance would help to resolve that, so I do like how this emphasizes notification to the newspaper, um, but even those of us who pay attention like myself, you know, some of these projects sneak through, so this would definitely go a long way, I believe. And one recommendation I would have would be to look at including more of an online notice, and maybe even on the public notice signs, having some sort of large letter number combination, because if you, as you're driving by, it's impossible to read these notice signs, but if you have like a number and something you could bring up on your phone really quick, look it up online, see what it's referring to, I think that'd be a big help. Another suggestion would be to expand the notification distance. As it's worded, I think it was only about 100, people who are within 100 feet of the development area, uh, would be, receive a notification, so my suggestion would be to expand that to maybe half a mile or so, so it gets out to more of the community. So, the other area I saw which, um, this would help address would be that, um, another issue basically is that projects go through without proper or sufficient public comment. So, one example is the Crystal Spring Development, back many years ago when I was working for the city during the first iteration, for example, the developers met with staff to go over their project, a couple of times, we had two large meetings, and this was before any kind of public comment or testimony, and it felt like, at the time, they really wanted to get the city's buy-in on a design, again, before they got too far along in the process, but the problem is, is before the public comment. And so, I feel like they need to make sure the developers keep an open mind through the process to allow the public to submit their comments, and I think this ordinance would help by having these public meetings, um, on top of, um, putting more emphasis on the Planning Commission. And, so, I do support giving the Planning Commission more say, um, because I feel like the, the Planning Commission works in, as a team, I'd say, with, it, it complements the professional staff that we have. The Planning Commission is often, often represents the, the public's voice, so I would like to see them have more say on these projects. For example, the Planted Unit Developments, which, right now, um, they don't have a say on any of that, the public doesn't really have a say, all they can do is comment on the specific, special exception. So, again, this would help, I support this because I feel like it would improve transparency, uh, it would improve public participation, and create better projects by getting the public's input earlier, so, thank you. And I do want to commend you on, well, neither of the sponsors are here, but, again, thanks for your consideration.
Yeah, let me just, let me just say this, um, I've, I've read, uh, Mr. Hyatt's letter today, and, uh, I, of course, I didn't, the amendments, the amendments are far too numerous for me to read, to catch up with today, it's been a busy day to say the least. But, uh, I, I can't, I do know, for the eight years that I've been sitting in this seat, um, there, there has always been a move to, uh, work out kinks in planning and zoning, all eight years. Uh, if, if, if this legislation in fact does just the opposite, add another layer to a committee that meets once a month, then, and if, if Mr. Hyatt has addressed that in his amendments, again, I, I'm guilty of not reading them yet, but I will, but I, this body needs to pay particular attention because there's been a clamor to make planning and zoning, uh, a lot user-friendly, and, and all I'm hearing is the same cries that we're going in another direction, so, I may, I guess we can talk with Mr. Gutwell, and, uh, Mr. Clark, by the way, did send, uh, Mr. Clark sent, uh, some documentation for 30, 3417, the last piece of legislation was up for public hearing too, so that probably should go in the record as well. Okay, but, so, I, I, Mr. Gutwell, I think that, uh, you know, you, 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 maybe you need to come and, and go through these amendments with, with the council, this body or the next council, and, and make sure we do get this right. I don't think it's something we need to rush, rush through. There's obviously some problems, and I thought everybody had the big white poster board. All of my life, I saw a big white poster board in front of everybody's building telling you when a public hearing was, if you snooze, you lose. I mean, that's how I grew up, but maybe times are changing. Thanks.
Thank you. The next two speakers are Leah Wilson and Alex LaProuse. And as always, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Want me to start over? Leah Wilson, 109 Chesapeake Avenue, here in Annapolis. Just wanted to make a few comments about, uh, about O 3417. Last month, Alderman Arnett and Alderman Budge asked the Planning Commission to stop all planned developments until they had rewritten the code. They offered no timeline for finishing the work, and the commission voted unanimously to recommend against that change. Now you are considering legislation from the same Alderman that will further complicate the already incredibly difficult process of developing successful projects here in Annapolis. It includes language that requires all applicants with a major site design application to not only conduct a public meeting, but to meet community concerns and then submit a comprehensive application for a Planning Commission public hearing regardless of the scope of the project. The director already has the authority and the ability to make this decision as to the appropriateness of the steps, and I just don't understand why we're changing that. We, we hire professionals to make these decisions, and we don't have to make every project go through the same plan. Major site design plan is any project that increases the gross floor area of a building by 20%. Think about the projects that come through, the building department in the city, that's the majority of them. Where have you increased the parking by 20%? It's a broad net. The timetables that are included in these projects will be unnecessarily extended. These steps will take at least an additional four months to navigate, even with community support. Staff will be further burdened with redundant reports, they already write reports every day about projects coming through, and now even the smallest of projects will require the same thing. The community's perception is that Annapolis is a very difficult place to do business, and it will be made much worse with legislation, with this legislation. Responsible developers are already doing the things this asks for. Anybody who makes their living doing this work knows the importance of community support. I understand the concern and the desire to make sure there's the ability for the community to provide input on these projects, but I'm not so sure we need this heavy hand to try and solve the problem. Let's not make things even more difficult. I think we should focus on updating the code in a comprehensive manner, not in a piecemeal one. We all understand, as Alderman Kirby mentioned, that this is an ongoing problem, we hear about it all the time. The real solution is to pay attention to the entire code, take a look at it, decide what needs to be changed, do it in a comprehensive manner, and if this is one part of it, so be it, but I think adding these pieces into the legislation one at a time, over and over again, is how we got to where we are. I'd like Annapolis to be a place where people think they can thrive, where businesses succeed, and we end up with planned developments that make sense to the entire community, and, uh, I don't think these further restrictions are going to help us to get to a better solution. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Now is your opportunity. Seeing no movement, I declare the public hearing on O 3517.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we keep the public hearing open until the next meeting.
Public hearing shall be kept open to the next meeting at your request. I also accept into the record memorandum from the Planning Commission on September the 27th, and from the Planning Director Pete Gutwell on September the 5th, and they'll be left open until the next meeting. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Next item, um, actually is business and miscellaneous items, there's, uh, first is GA 1618, uh, associated with 2017 Play 60 grant.
Is there a motion to approve GA 1618?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, next is another GA 1718, public open space by Water Park Development Project.
Is there a motion to approve GA 1718?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, I would ju, just like to make it clear, there's been some discussion about the park at Bywater, and whether, uh, city tax funds were being used for this park. Uh, we've received a $230,000 grant for this park, not a matching requirement at all. Uh, we came up a little bit short because of the time it took us to build this park, um, and so we got an additional $55,000, and it is that amount that requires a 25% match, which, uh, we have, and it will, you'll see the funding for it being moved later on in another GT. But I just wanted to be clear to the community that this park was not paid for by tax dollars, that we received a state grant to pay for the park. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, next, um, is another business and miscellaneous item, GA 1818 regarding program open space.
Is there a motion to approve GA 1818?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, Mr. City, uh, Mr. Mayor, next item on the agenda is another business and miscellaneous item, GA 1918 regarding body armor replacement.
Is there a motion to approve GA 1918?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, next, um, under business and miscellaneous is, uh, GT 3-18, which is a transfer from the Home Ownership Assistance Trust Fund to CDBG Property Rehabilitation Project.
Is there a motion to approve GT 318?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, another business and miscellaneous item, GT 4-18, which involves a transfer from Fire Station Having to Kingsport Park.
Is there a motion to approve GT 4-18?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, only that this is the matching fund for that previous grant.
All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is, um, still another business and miscellaneous item, ID 318-17 for fiscal year 17 regarding unpaid vendors.
Is there a motion to approve, excuse me, ID 31817?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, then, uh, we have now, um, a second reader on O 4217, which regarding, uh, certificate of adequate public facilities.
Is there a motion to adopt O 4217?
Uh, so moved.
Is there a second? All right, no second. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Uh, that is, yeah, the agenda, uh, the agenda's been completed. Mr. Mayor?
Can we go back to this O 4217? We have better than a third of the council missing, and I just don't think it's, 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 uh, possible for us to go ahead and pass this with so many people missing, including the sponsors.
Understand, and some of the sponsors of the amendments aren't here. I was ready to vote yes on it tonight, but can't make a second as chair, so, I guess in their hand, a motion to adjourn?
Move to-
Was that a motion to reconsider? I mean, I, I don't know what it's, no? It's gone.
It dies.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Yay.